Not able to make it. Paige is also not able to make it, but Rick Smith, Commissioner Smith, is on the phone, I believe. So we'll go ahead and proceed. One more minute? Okay. Yep, 1:59. Two o'clock.
Got it.
Okay, it's two o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Public comment, there were two people that signed up, Sylvia Pate and Martha Arrowood, and I understand, Marty, you want to go first and then Sylvia?
Marty Arrowood, 114 Shrimp Street, and if you do not know it, I'm Paige Dyer's sister. So I have a statement by Commissioner Paige Dyer. I would like to state that in the special meeting, January 5th, 2024, and the regular BOC Commissioners Meeting, January 23rd, 2024, I voiced my concern repeatedly with the schedule of multiple meetings and the times, and the times those meetings took place. I also thought that, like in the past, the Commissioners switched out of schedule one to two special meetings a month with the purpose of handling the budget. Scheduling multiple meetings in the middle of the day affected my business and decreased public access to these meetings. In response to my concern, Rick Parfus and Tracy Thomas commented that I didn't have to attend all the meetings. The meetings would only be workshops for the budget. The main budget meetings scheduled in April and May, I could attend. Mr. Myers said, and I quote, "We are new and have a lot to learn. They are not meetings we will vote or take actions on. They are budget sessions, so we understand the finances of the town." Tom Myers also stated, quote, "Multiple sessions, less than two hours, are more effective than marathon sessions. They wanted to concentrate on the budget and get ahead of it," unquote. Rick Parfus said, quote, "We are working as a board, and we are not going to do a bunch of crazy stuff while you're not there. Honestly, I'm not kidding, you can watch. We can discuss the concerns you have and work together," unquote. Please note, these quotes can be verified through the video records of the town meetings. Obviously, we are not working together. A budget workshop has been turned into a business meeting with four items, or added to the agenda that needed discussion and possible action-taking. This agenda was submitted at 1:00 p.m., which is 49 hours prior to the meeting, a meeting scheduled for 2:00 p.m. The document is 69 pages long. In the interest of transparency, the public has limited time to read the material, and many people cannot attend to provide public input. Materials of this nature should not be added to a special meeting that was originally designated as a budget workshop. This should be handled at a regular meeting or called special meeting for that specific purpose. So the statement about concentrating on the budget and not having sessions greater than two hours is false, and the statements made about a budget workshop only, no action or voting to take place and working together, is also false. Three Commissioners are taking it upon themselves to do town business without working with two other Commissioners and the Mayor. They are going to the media and making statements when in the past were handled by the Mayor as the spokesperson for the town. Concerning the issue with the town attorney, the town manager should determine if it is best for the town to hire an interim or advertise an interview for the town attorney. Candidates for either or both would be brought to the BOC for discussion and action. The present plan has an interim attorney that has stated she will need to have outside counsel for construction law, labor and employment law, and tax law. She would try to secure fees at the agreed-upon hourly rate. So we would pay the interim attorney $250 an hour and outside counsel $250 or more per hour. This is double what we're paying for previous attorney fees. I know I've passed my time, but I ask grace since I am speaking for a Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Why would the Board not do it in a way in which the town manager would post and seek attorneys with government experience? Then the entire Board could review and discuss. Concerning the Keystone Agreement, the agreement is being upheld. The town staff is working diligently on this. The concern is the ADA-compliant bathrooms proposed for Avenue Q. These were already planned prior to mediation and therefore were not included in the mediation since the infractions from the bathrooms under the bridge were being handled. Tom Myers has stated to me directly that we don't need those bathrooms, that the bathrooms under the bridge are fine, that those bathrooms are not in the Keystone Agreement, so we don't need them. It is apparent in scheduling meetings that conflict with other BOC member schedules that the three Commissioners that refer to themselves constantly as "we" have decided that since they have the majority vote, they can conduct town business amongst themselves, foregoing any discussion. As a result, they are making decisions with no public input and no input from two other Commissioners and the Mayor. Where is the transparency that previous Boards were constantly accused of not having by these new Commissioners? Finally, again, I apologize, like before, to my property owners and those people who re-elected me that not being able to attend these meetings.
Sylvia?
Sylvia Pate, 111 Charlotte Street. I actually wasn't planning on being here today, but I thought the meeting was about the budget and the current budget, and I can look at that on the website and view the financial report. But when I saw the agenda, it shocked me to see the meeting agenda that was posted on Monday for the meeting this afternoon. This meeting had been approved at the 123 Regular Board of Commissioners Meeting, along with the series of special meetings pertaining to the budget planning process. It was noted on the schedule that the February meetings were to review current budgets and status, and with today's meeting scheduled, to review the public works and parks and rep budgets. The three of you commented on either one or both of the meetings in January, either the January 5th special meeting or the 23rd regular meeting, that these budget meetings would not involve action items and debate would be taken. As Commissioners Dyer and Smith indicate, they indicated their inability to be at all these scheduled meetings. It was further stated that you were not going to do anything while they were not present. So it was surprising to me to see that in addition to the budget session for today, there were four other items added for discussion and possible action or approval on the agenda. I would venture to say that most of the residents and property owners do not even know that you're meeting today, while you vote on items that are certainly impacting them, and with such a short timeframe to even provide input or try to be present at the meeting today. I do not think this makes the test of transparency, which you advocated for when via your method of operation and you criticized the formal Board for it. It appears that you are determined to prevent the other two Commissioners from participating in the very Board that they were elected to. They did have residents who voted for their representation. If you're going to be adding items to these future special meetings already scheduled, I would at least ask you to provide more notice for input or not add the items to the agenda, and to also look at other methods to get the residents and the property owners notified of the meetings. As to item seven on the agenda, it would seem more appropriate if you're going to hire an interim attorney, that you hire someone who has experience in municipal government, and not hire someone that does not possess that experience level and have to pay double for outside assistance. By the time you bring an interim attorney up to speed on municipal government, and in particular Holden Beach, you can advertise for an attorney, do your interviewing, and get someone on board that has the knowledge base that's necessary to do the job and save us taxpayers some money in the process. Thanks for the opportunity to share my comments, and thanks for your service.
Okay, item three, discussion and possible action on accepting bids for Harbor Acres dredge project and acceptance of a grant from the Division of Water Resources for the project. Assistant Town Manager, first.
Yes, sir, and if I could just have a minute to call our engineer so that he can verify things for today, I need to add a call to this.
Hello, Kristi.
Hello, I think.
Hello.
I think now I have both of you, I've merged the calls. Can both Commissioner Smith and Mr. Lippard hear us? Shane?
I'm here.
Okay. Rick, are you still there? Commissioner Smith, are you still on the line?
Yeah.
Okay. So with this item, the town manager made the Board aware at, thank you, Daniel, the town manager made the Board aware at the last regular meeting and in reports that this item would probably need to come before them based on the state's request that we move on the grant prior to the regularly scheduled Board meeting. We had a bid opening yesterday. The most responsive bidder at the bid opening was TD Ure. We, the town manager and I have had discussions with our engineer today. TD Ure has confirmed that their bid is solid, and I just had, just for verification purposes, because in the email that was uploaded to the website and sent to the Commissioners, he said he would call in. We still had him call in, but we have had a discussion with him, and the bid is good. So based on that, Shane, if you would like to weigh in?
Yes, Kristi, you know, we have talked with TD Ure, and, you know, they confirmed that their bid was solid, and, you know, they appear to be, you know, I mean, well, they are a very well-known respected marine construction company around the coast. They did provide, you know, their license and department and things, so, you know, I think with that, we would be able to deliver a recommendation of award to TD Ure for this dredge contract for Harbor Acres.
So then, building off the town manager's recommendation at the bottom of your topic cover sheet, it would be approval and award of the most responsive bid and direct the town manager to execute the grant contract and the notice to proceed contingent on permits in hand. We are waiting on one water quality permit to go to the core, so you would add that to the end of your motion.
I'll make the motion. Award, a motion to award to the most responsive bidder, that's TD Ure, and also to direct the town manager to execute the grant.
And the notice to proceed contingent on permits?
And the notice to proceed contingent on permits.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Okay. Shane, you may hang up now, if you will do that on your end, so we don't lose Commissioner Smith.
I'll do that. Thank you, Kristi, thank you, Commissioners. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item four is a budget workshop. We do have a couple of loose ends from the first session that we should probably act on to move ahead, which had to do with the vision, the goals, and the priorities. So Commissioner Thomas, are you ready to?
Do all the grant stuff, get to that. Yeah, so I would like, do you want to read the vision statement from the? So my motion is to agree to use the vision statement in the land use plan as our vision statement for our budget proceedings, and then I'll just read that vision. The vision statement is Holden Beach will utilize its available resources to be an inclusive, family-oriented residential community that strives to protect and sustain its natural habitat and recreational beaches for current and future generations.
Okay, as we talked about in the first meeting, I think this was just the statement.
So we need a second before we discuss.
Second.
So, yeah, this is a carryover from the first session where we were setting visions and priorities and goals. So I guess we got a motion to accept. Okay?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, unanimous. And then the, the goals?
Yeah, so I am making a motion to agree to the straw man for a successful budget, and I can read that if you want to. It's, the straw man goals for a successful budget is no tax increase, no fund balance appropriations from the general fund or the B Part Fund, and set aside funds for beach renourishment. Second?
Did you want to just do the whole thing at once? Or is that?
I was doing them one at a time, but.
Okay. All right, I'll second that.
Any discussion? I guess I've been, Commissioner Smith, I haven't been meaning to leave you out. I'm sorry, I forgot you were on the phone. Did you have any comments?
I think it's taking him a minute.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And then finally was the criteria for prioritizing spending decisions.
So make a motion to agree to the straw man for priority criteria for spending decisions, and those, those are, A, protecting the health and safety of our residents and visitors, B, providing reliable core services such as water sewer, police, streets, building code, zoning, stormwater, canal dredging, ADA compliance, communication, as in BOC meetings, website, public input survey, et cetera. C, protecting property, example from hurricanes, flooding, and fires, and D, providing amenities such as recreation or pier, dog park, block queue, additional parking, boat, car, concerts, activities, et cetera.
Second.
Any discussion, Commissioner Smith?
I was under the impression we weren't going to vote, have any votes during the budget work.
I don't know if there's a vote or by affirmation, but at the first meeting, these really should have been covered. It should have been discussion and possible action, the possible action stuff was left off the agenda. So we're really catching up from the first meeting, and.
The kickoff meeting.
The kickoff meeting, which would have set the vision, the goals, and priorities. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay, moving on then to item four B, which is the budget workshop, public works. I assume I turn it over to you, Chris.
Yes, sir. If I hear you.
Yes, sir.
Well, page 49 acts as our actual street department's budget. That's actually where we usually start it up. I'm going to do my best to try to maybe cover some topics and things maybe that we haven't completed or like secretly for the end of this year. I felt like I've done a pretty good job of providing those with you during our orientation, but if not, I'm going through them again, whatever I can remember to do. If I fail to mention anything that you've got concerns with, don't hesitate to ask, because I would like to say that as we move forward, I will provide you with something on each line item, explain what those are. I know there's a lot of components and pieces somebody tried to remember in their mind, and for myself, that makes it easier for me too, because I can just look there and I got it before me, and not like you sat on the hot seat. So with that being said, the street department budget this year was a little over a million bucks, and I think expenditure-wise, there's still $670 remaining, so there's a lot of spent money, and a big part of that is stormwater related, that 332 that you see on the papers, big outfit to run there. If you go up to the top of the page, I'm sure it probably stands out like a sore thumb when somebody looks at the Savory line item and says 91% of you. I need to follow up on that, make sure that word, that key answer or something like that, that if it happens, employees retired this year couldn't make the spending, but the way we're set up, where proceedings come back from the Department of Government, I need to make sure I run those numbers and make sure those are correct what you're seeing.
Can I ask you a question before we even get started on that? So you have, you have the general fund, and then you have like this one that's 0570, and then you have on the next page 0580.
Yeah.
So what's the difference between those two accounts?
That's sanitation on the other page.
So this is sanitation on the second page?
Yep.
And the first page is?
Streets.
Streets?
Kind of confused to me too, because I always think when I see funds, again, the first thing that goes up in my mind is streets, and I favor them a lot of times, but that's a separate part of the system.
So you have separate employees for each of those?
Yeah, well, I actually got seven, I have always told them, but their salaries come from different, they don't work full-time, and so we have to look at it like that.
Okay, thanks.
And it did bring light on too, that I do have another employee retiring this year that I have a date on, but that's good, to keep my mind focused on funding and salaries, and make sure I got on my basis, because.
Hey, Chris. I had a question too, and I don't know if it's for you or for David, but when it says year-to-date or so far, is that as of January, December? What's in here, what's not in here?
I'll answer that.
Oh, Dan, sorry.
That's as of February 1st.
Okay, so the end of January, basically. So that just ballpark would be 60% of the year, is that right?
Fifty-eight, yeah.
Fifty-eight point three or something like that.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and tell y'all, I don't like that subroutine that's written in there that says optimal, I think there's a thing in there that says optimal, you know, and it correlates to the calendar percentage of the year, because it, it's a number that only means something when evaluated in terms of every single thing on there, because if we have big projects that happen in March, April, May, then it just looks like that we haven't done anything when actually we have things scheduled. So I'm not a fan of that, and I don't know if it's on this one or not, but in one of them I saw, it was, it was like, that's where you should be, and I don't subscribe to that, to that.
No, I, I.
Not wholeheartedly. I get it, but I don't subscribe to it carte blanche.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, sometimes there's projects that happens or doesn't happen, so it's going to hit or it's not. I think it's, the concern is, Chris addressed, was things like salary, which should track with the calendar year.
Yeah, that's an anomaly.
Okay, so maybe it'd be helpful if, you know, just to point out if there's a big item that's still coming, or there's a big item you've actually done.
That's what I'm hoping to do right now.
Okay, great, thanks.
I'm starting at the top of the page, and I'm sure it was something like 91, 10, 15. I agree with you, because that where you should be deal, when you tie that like order bills, you look at the bid, you know, look right now, that kind of gives you a sense, because it's going by time gear that, that you made your bidding comes in, like you got heavy moves during the summer, or last three months of summer versus winter, that kind of gets confusing, but I try to go through this and make it as good as I can.
Chris, let me ask you one quick question.
Go ahead.
It looks like we might have moved some money out of professional services into salaries. If for some reason that 91% was a real number, you got someplace in this budget where you're going to be able to cover the shortage?
Well, that's something I, before I make that statement right now, I'd love to get what we've got.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Just getting that out there. I kind of feel like probably so, but I don't age that stone to give it all.
All right, fair enough.
Sense of security. And actually, you know, we look at overtime, that's what, that's like shooting fly and ducks, I mean.
Yeah.
A lot of our overtime is, is weather-related. When I say weather-related, it's not just, you know, whether it raining, you know, all these flood events where we have water under the streets, especially the sewer department, because once the streets get overflowing, that's a lot overtime, you know, walking the streets, malfunctioning, I'm sure everyone has, I've seen the trucks out, seen the guys on foot, and other things like that.
I got one other question for you.
Go ahead.
On professional services, when we get to this year's ask for the budget, just list what those services are, so we know.
I know, look that in, that next line that I'm going to talk about.
All righty, sorry.
Well, hold on, before you go off overtime, so you budget that just based on historical trends, or, you know, how do you, granted, you don't know what it's going to be needed for, but after all your experience, you've got to feel for.
I wouldn't know that necessarily, I'd say that that is true, but like right now, here's a good example, that our pavement asset management plan, the researches and the streets, that plan is probably, I don't know, probably ten years old or better. Now, so the price and the priorities have changed over the years, that plan needs to be reviewed. The part of that, that money right there, probably, I ain't going to pull a lump right there, but it's going to be a pretty good portion just to cover that, and that's what my ability is, is to try to have that complete. I've actually spoken to Ryan, and he says he could probably have that complete in the next couple of months. I think that'd be one of the things that would give us some good hard numbers to get going to the budget year. And not only that, you know, if we take ones that we've already repaid, we've probably done over a million and a half dollars worth since we started to do it, we'll rotate those back at the list with years of different paid. As time goes on, you probably get some kind of timeframe actually along the street access length. But I will say that was one program, that's one of the best ones of the week ever come, where we've been reducing very little on the streets. And I'm going to go ahead and go down the line.
Okay.
And get this in there while we're talking about streets. I actually want to try to, we're going to try to get bids out from High Point Street, it needs research and same kind of condition, it runs okay, when he was in after the sewer cancellation. It's basically about like riding a horse from the intersection, oh, you go far all the way down to the end, with dips, hills, and holes in it. So if we get good paid for numbers, and I feel like we will, I'm hoping maybe we can kind of make it work at good, high on paving, actually, on high on analysis, not working, and maybe we get some good, some good numbers back for it, at least we have any mobilization for it here. So that weren't planned for the bulkhead, and that at the same time is just the way it worked out. I rode all the streets, and I looked at them, and that one over there, the High Point, it's good wood, and it's definitely in pretty bad shape, and it didn't seem to me to go ahead and do that right there and clean that home freedom all the way out, moving on that line.
So would that be a street paving project then? Is that where that's?
It researches is what it'd be called.
I mean, in terms of which to count on this list, would it?
So that's at the bottom where you're saying the 312, you're going to try to spend that on High Point?
I'm not going to try to spend that, we're going to put it out for bids, hope it comes in, there might be a lot, a lot less than that. Tax leaders, signage, the tax base, that actually covers the street pace. So here's, go.
That's, is this Powellville stuff? Yeah.
And, Chris, you got other streets you're looking at for this year?
No, that would be done as long as we'd be doing this year, and then whatever, you know, once we get our list back, we know what the priority was for the following year.
Okay.
I feel like I've got a good idea somewhere about my mind, but it's, you know, we've kind of whittled down enough now that it's a little easier, but the price and everything so out of the wacko that it's just not a good option to look at, and I think it makes perfect sense of getting it done.
Absolutely agree.
And it's a good year to come, and I don't think that it's going to take nowhere near that to what you see on that, but that, that if it does, you know, back in time, years ago, I know the trouble went up in price of paving and everything, even at the root, it's getting kind of hard to get it done, and you know, since then, that's paid by, so I feel like we'll see a lot better numbers than what we see right now.
And then you would use those numbers for next year's projection for paving? Because I know you have projects to do.
Probably, probably something we're about, you know, you got nothing to find you're going to do, what the hood is, it's a good, you know.
Right, right. You could extrapolate from those real numbers.
I haven't looked at that plan, but that plan's got road lanes, and it's got estimated calls for miles or whatever, and it's, it's pretty good, pretty good time.
Yeah, it's a good plan.
Yeah, you gave us a list, a prioritized list, I guess that was.
It'll be, it'll be listed, it'll be right in here, I came to one that we got right now, but it's not that the data, so if it's year old, but also.
One second, I'm sorry. So for that, then it's by year, it's kind of almost a capital improvement plan that says, this is how much we're going to spend each year, and this year we're doing High Point, next year we're doing?
It's, it's got, for example, it might say Charlotte Street, 3,000, some people won't cost this, but people took out a dollar, it'd be something like that.
Okay, and it goes out how many years?
Well, it don't say anything about years.
It relatively ranks them as, as a function of 100%, and that's, it's a relative ranking. It doesn't, it doesn't do the budget side of it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, how many streets we have to do, which years we kind of thinking they'll get to.
If, if, if it's a program, it starts with the first, the fifth.
We've actually adapted that list and put it into the CIP.
Okay, that was my question, yeah, okay.
We've tried to bring it into the CIP.
And does it list the streets, or just has dollars?
It lists the streets.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
Let me get my telephone back.
Because you were talking about bulkheads too, because you didn't spend any of that money yet.
We haven't spent that yet, but I'm hoping that we can, that we can spend it in the next month, because like I said, I'd love to get that bulkhead done before Paige gets there, that way we don't have the street wrapped up, and we don't be damaging anything that we couldn't, they're tearing up the lawn.
What about the drainage project? That has a whole bunch of money left in it too.
I'll speak to that. Whenever we, we develop this budget, and the piece that you don't see, there's $100,000 for the corps' partner processing agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we did not know how the money was going to flow, so the $100,000 on the revenue side and $100,000 of the expense side in that line shouldn't be there, because that is money that we don't see. That's strictly from the Treasury to the Corps, and when we were developing the budget, we did not know how that money plays out, so that, there's a $100,000 null.
Okay.
In, in there. So it's really 200 or something.
So is this where the stormwater study is living, or do, okay. All right, because I was, when I saw projects, I'm going, great, we're. I was, when I saw projects, I'm going, great, we're gonna fix some drainage stuff, but the answer is not yet.
Yeah, that's basically what we were talking about, we, not our orientation, where we had that master, where it's basically like crazy master, and had like this secretary that keep concerned.
Yes, sir.
Start with it.
Yep, yep, I'm with you.
So, that's still hanging out there. Those are, three is probably the biggest thing that I can think of, is, uh, do it on the street department work.
Okay, so, David, can I revisit? So, the the hundred thousand, we're talking about this three thirty-two, three hundred, and it should be two thirty-two, three hundred? Is that how I'm interpreting what you said?
It sounds like you're saying in the revenue page, we should see a hundred thousand over there, somewhere that equals it?
And it is.
Okay.
And and there's a hundred thousand dollars of, of, I forget what we call it, I call it core money.
Yeah.
Direct federal stormwater.
And formerly earmarks?
That supports their storm damage reduction program, right? Isn't that, uh, didn't, uh-
This is, this is stormwater money, so there's a hundred.
Okay.
We put a hundred thousand dollars over on the revenue side, and there's a hundred thousand dollars on the expense side in that line, because that money does not touch us, it's a wash.
Okay, I'm, I got you.
So, it is, it is, it's a, a negative hundred grand off of the federal stormwater budget, and that's a corresponding decrement in the expenditure line.
Okay, and that is, includes the projects, or that's just the study?
It's just a hundred thousand dollars for the study. No project.
Okay, so, the three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred-
Minus two hundred.
Minus a hundred thousand is two thirty-two, and that's just the study?
No, no. There's more to it than two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the study.
Okay. And I'm with Rick, it's, or Tracy said projects, I was thinking projects.
Right.
Well, you have to have engineer to come up with projects, we just get the, the board.
Yeah, I got you.
So, here's a question related to that, David. So, the the hundred and thirty-one spent, have we spent the hundred thousand for the, um, corps study yet, or is that in the two hundred unspent?
We have not spent the hundred thousand dollars, because we will not spend the hundred thousand dollars. It's not our month, okay? And the corps has not completed all of their work to spend the money on their side. That's federal money, it goes from the treasury to the corps, it doesn't come to us. And so, I I can't answer your question, as your next question, that I'm surmising, is, well, how much have they spent? I don't know how much they've spent. We don't have a PPA yet, but that hundred thousand dollars is supposed to cover that cost.
It will be spent this year, in, out of this-
This, it is, it is not in this budget. It should not be in this budget, it's one of the-
Yeah, I mean, it's, we don't even see the money, it's just pulling outside of us.
And the hundred thousand dollars, when you say this year, that is an appropriation made on the federal fiscal year, which is three months offset with our, uh, with our fiscal year. So, we've, we're sup, they're supposed to be finalizing that to bring it to the board, and our meeting is February-
Twentieth.
Thirteenth, or, no, the, uh, meeting with the corps guys to get a better handle on where they are in that process. Right now, if you ask me how much money that they, have they spent out of the treasury, I don't know. But they're not spending it, we're not spending it. We're not, we don't have any money coming to us, we're not spending any money.
So, I'm gonna, I guess, follow up on Tracy's. We've got two hundred thousand dollars remaining in the budget.
One hundred.
No, two hundred, seven, sixty-six is remaining.
Two hundred, hundred and thirty-one, five thirty-three spent, two hundred, seven, sixty-six remaining.
Right, but what Dave is saying is there's a hundred grand there that we don't see, what was the budgeted amount, correct? There's a hundred grand there that shouldn't be listed under budgeted, so we really have a hundred grand left.
Your remaining balance is-
Hundred grand, right, okay.
It's a hundred-
Right.
Seven, sixty-six.
Seven, sixty-six. And that will or will not?
That'll cover the study.
Cover, cover what?
The McHale study.
Oh, the study, okay, got you.
Well, backing back up to that space, uh, services line, all the best of that, you know, and I said the proportion of that is, uh, that, uh, street paving update. But it can also be, you know, can be served, maybe, if you have an emergency situation you need to deal with, and that budgeting and that, something of the mind, having Zebra to cover an emergency wheel, that doesn't really work my world, you know?
Yeah, I got you.
It's not that realistic, but if I got an emergency situation coming, I can call the state's police and say, we'll take care of it, two weeks, I get money.
I understand, and that was one thing I meant to mention to you, particularly in your business, you don't have time for us to have a meeting to cut you a check, so I know some of these things may be placekeepers just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you.
And regardless of what our budget number is, I never generally, like, I'm open to a bunch of Christmas presents, I get the half too, right now.
Mm-hmm.
And and I don't feel comfortable spending sometimes when it gets closer to the end of the year, but you never know when you might have an emergency situation going on. Basically, we were assuming, but if you go down, um, you can see, uh, bills with the grounds, uh, get one, that's the, uh-
Perfect.
Yeah, bill with the ground, maintenance supply, that line there's like forty thousand, two seventy-four, or actually forty-two, five eighty-two. Half of that right there is Carolina Creations, for, for thirty-three thousand, five hundred and two, the two dollars, that's Carolina Creations, there's actually the maintenance of the bridge and-
Chris and I split their contract.
They split the other half.
On the other side of the bridge, the-
I'm not gonna go through here to one of them, like, where M and R equipment, where that's basically wrong, or maintenance tractors, we need, or anything that's with the related-
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still back at the buildings and grounds, so, I mean, that's bridge plantings, right, trees and, um, I guess I'm having a hard time.
Carolina Creations, you got Landscapes.
Right, and it's on the other side of the bridge.
It's more than just the other side of the, of the bridge, like-
My part's the other side of the bridge, that's what I thought.
Oh, right.
Oh, what's your part? For Carolina Creations, everything else on the island?
Yeah, the part of town hall, so.
Pretty much.
Town hall?
All, all the other, yeah.
I thought that was B part. The, the, the plantings here, is that what we're-
The irrigation.
Make, makes them all, all upkeep around the building, so, pretty confident, I'm right, I can do research, just when we come back next time, I'll make sure I've got the rest down, I'm pretty sure those.
So, eight thousand has been spent, thirty, I'm, I'm sorry, thirty-four thousand, four ninety-four has been spent, huh?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Let me ask a simple question for Simple Mind. Um, under the utility streetlights, we, um, we got fifty-four grand there. Is that just for paying the electric bill on our streetlights?
Yeah, so much per light, that's all that we-
Alright, I just, just wanted to make sure I knew what it was, I'm-
If you have anything else, they must be pretty close on the number, because if you look at the standard, it's gonna say-
Yeah, yeah.
We have, like, years, so that's-
Yeah, I don't have any issue with it, I just was curious what it was, make sure I knew. See, what is-
Yeah.
Yep.
So, the street, oh, hold on, I'm sorry, streetlights, we, we lease those, right? Eight, or Brunswick Electric?
They, they sell like for a month, Brunswick Electric, and that other, we have a maintenance on, you know, that one goes out, whatever, the most expensive places that they hear is like, keep life perfect.
So, they own it, they maintain it, we just pay a lease charge to have them-
Pay a month of price per light.
Okay.
Will they replace those daggone purple ones?
Yeah, we have service level agreement with them.
Huh?
You don't want that.
No, it's like walking around with the black light going on. That was probably okay when I was eighteen, but not so much now.
I haven't had any intention to do it right lately, but I've had a, I would talk about sleep twice, cause they, they replace quality of those trucks.
Yeah.
I don't like those sunbeam, look like that one's going, it's, yeah, we do light, it's got some kind of coating or something on it, and that coating wears, oh, it gives you that night, put a blue.
Yeah, that's it.
We know.
Alright, well, if I see some, I'll give you a shout. Or, or when I see them, I'll tell you where they are.
M and R Streets, that's a pretty good one, and we actually started off at twenty-eight thousand dollars, and I'm down to like eighteen some, and that covers like motor grader rentals and like that. And then, we get less dirt streets, which is a good thing in my world, because when I buy material, keep them up with. And I did have still a pretty good bit of patching that I've got to take care of, so, I mean, looks at that, we're pretty close. Going right down, we've already discussed the bulkheads and street damage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think while I was keeping open, I kind of set the plan up, but I guess it's all, we'll do back, we've done the street paving. We actually purchased, uh, two, two mowers this past year, that's been borrowed out to about forty-one thousand, eight thousand that's been, got nine things on the list, so that's about forty's been.
So, the mowers are, um, capital, outlay, vehicles and equipment, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Sidewalks, uh, I've got a lot of that to do, we've actually got some took out right now, we got to try to get pulled back before it's ready, but everything's good on the D O T, and now everything all pulled down at once, it's been, uh, out of the past, trying to get that to happen.
Yeah, they've been doing a lot of sidewalk, sidewalk work.
Yeah, and actually, when you, when you see the, the sidewalk work, it's on these main lanes, where they're putting those mats.
Yeah, the blue.
That's basically, that's not a, us paying that part there, that's actually part of that D O T project, the ADA stuff, so, that's what that's-
That's what the blue mats are for, ADA?
Yeah.
So, they know they're coming to an intersection?
I would assume so.
Okay.
I hung some, I hung this map for like eight hundred bucks a piece, and that's in the store.
So, just, just, just to clarify, this whole road paving, bike lanes, I mean, that's all paid for prior years, nothing's in this budget or next year's budget, it's just already done, right?
We paid our share.
Eight hundred and-
Seven hundred fifty, I think.
Seven hundred fifty?
I think so.
Okay. And, okay. Cause I know that's been, I don't know what year that ended up being paid, that was being talked about for many years, I think.
I think we paid it last year.
Okay.
If you build on that page, we're just in sanitation page.
Yep.
That's what we saw today. Sanitation budget, total budget's like two hundred and twenty-two thousand, right, two twenty-three. Rest of the walk, uh, two years, we'll try to save the place that you want to wear it, uh, where, don't be lying, it's done. One of the big tickets, and I just hardly, we spent twenty-three thousand dollars something a year on trash bags, so, we can use all that stuff, everybody-
That's just what I was gonna ask, yeah.
I actually left it some last year, get hard, get materials, I'm lucky I'm aware of that. If you go down to that contracted services, make from the bottom, that five eighty, forty-five hundred, that contracted services, that, uh, that forty-nine thousand dollars you see right there, that's half of the road back, uh, service comes out of it, which is like half of the twenty-five thousand dollars, that service is fifteen thousand, a year, rolling in trash, and about fifty thousand.
Then the other half is in your budget? Cause I saw that.
Yeah, and the remainder, what you see, there's another gift, ten thousand or something, that's probably pretty good in service, that, uh, where they go around and pick up the eight, ten yard, three people's houses, like, like three pick, pick up to the spring, and three and four. And actually, too, that sanitation's, uh, where I said just trash bags, that really ain't all just trash bags, it does pay for mosquito spray, for spraying the mosquitoes, and everybody can go and swat during the summer.
So, I guess I'm curious, on, on things like the, why is it split between B part and sanitation? Is there some rationale or basis for splitting?
I think the rationale might have been, and Christie could probably speak, give me a line, she's usually good about keeping me running back, but I think the rationale of that is like that can leaving out there, and then get rolled back to tourism, like it, but, that's my mind.
Yeah, so-
So, you're saying some of it is residents and some of it is tourists, and that's why you split it?
And then on this one, I got same thing on salaries. This one's at twenty-one percent, so I, this gets to the split between the two different accounts on salaries?
Yeah, I want to visit that too, right there, because that's, so, you're gonna be twenty-one percent at that time.
Well, the other one's at ninety-one, so I'm, I'm glad this one's at twenty-one.
But I've, I've given free, I've given free at cheap margins, so, but right now-
Is it the same people, they're just charging time to different accounts, or?
Yes.
Okay, and they charge hourly, weekly, how, how's that?
Just done on an annual basis, as far as the programmatic.
So, they just do their work, they get paid, and behind the scenes, you're charging it to different accounts?
Yes.
Keep up the budget, again, I mean, they can't run around with a pencil, these papers, I'm just two hours over.
No, I, I understand.
No, we don't, we don't do that.
You know, I know you got seven people, it's just, yeah, I, it's just, I guess I'm wondering why we just don't put it in one of these accounts versus the other one. I mean, if there's no law, no rationale between the time they actually spend doing streets and the time they-
Uh, there is rationale, and it's based on good operator, um, estimates on how often individuals work in a particular function or account.
Okay.
And so, we make a, we make a pro rata decision on fifty percent of this guy is water sewer, fifty percent of this, you know, of the rest of his time is spent mowing grass, so that's, so that's the way we adjudicate.
Okay.
And we've adjusted that pretty good, it's one time, right, people out there running the full-time trash route, but getting out of hand, got to remember we couldn't keep hook, but it's dead.
Cause in the summer, it's, it's contracted, right? You've got contractors doing it?
Yeah, and all season, it's that period.
And they're, where are they at in here? Contracted services, is that it?
Contracted services for beaches on, uh, on Creations, on beach.
Well, that's on you, okay.
Are you talking about the ranger and all that?
No, during the summer, it's a different crew that drives the beach, picks up the trash in the trash cans, and they come more often.
Okay, okay, okay.
And you got more, and then in the off-season now, it's down employees.
It's from oral day, I think it's from oral day to September the third. It used to stop, uh, first of September, but it seemed like after COVID hit summer, got extended to last October. Oh, really?
Yeah.
And can I ask you a question at the blue can recycling? Does that, um, program pay for itself, or do we subsidize that?
It's supposed to pay for itself, but there's a, a disconnect between what we're connecting and what we're paying for. We've got work to do on, on that.
Do you know what the, do you know what the delta is?
It's about twenty thousand dollars last year. Uh, if you look at the, the blue can recycling, it's eighty-two.
Yeah.
Showing there, and on, and on the revenue side, I think that we, we brought in about sixty-two, so that's-
Yeah, I couldn't find it on the, is it, is it, it didn't seem like it was-
That's in the general fund.
Oh, we haven't talked, well, this is-
We haven't got, we haven't got revenue yet.
Well, on the next page.
Not for the general fund.
Oh, it's in the general fund for revenue, but it's in this fund for expenditures.
Well, this is, no, this is-
This is fund ten.
This is general-
Right, this is all general fund.
Okay, okay.
And we just don't have the general fund revenue sheet. I'd ask, David, and it's not ready yet.
Got it. So, we're working on that.
To answer your question, is, uh-
It's about a twenty K delta that we subsidize, the town subsidizes.
Last year, yeah. It's, it's, it's supposed to pay for itself.
Everybody did what you see on that page.
I am.
Yes.
Alright, when you go over to the next page, you see ton thirty, which is water and sewer. Um, and just go ahead and just start off like this, among the things that always catch your eye, they, uh, it waters you to charge. Always kind of skip, because you water meters, got your work, you've got to catch that money, and things can get bad for that, but hurry, if you, if you work careful. But, uh, if you look at the revenue part on that line there, and right now is a seven hundred fifty thousand, five feet, which puts us at forty-seven cents on what we're projecting for the year, so I feel like that's pretty much on track. I love the big-
Hey, Chris, just a second.
Yeah, I'm not following.
I'm not following that.
Just a second on that, uh, water use charges. Is that my water bill essentially? Okay, and I just want to go up a lot, up to the second line at the top where we have loan proceeds?
Yep.
What loan do we have that we're getting money from?
We, we don't have a loan. That was, that was, uh, and the anticipated amount that was necessary to make with the, um, expense, uh, for the, uh, the EPA STAG grant.
I got you.
Um, to provide the funding for the corresponding expense, uh, which is...
The sewer station.
Three point two six nine. Whatever those two add up, it is the corresponding expense line, uh, for the anticipated construction of this station.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong.
We're, we're, we're on a different path now with the state appropriation and, and that.
Right, and the state, the state's not on here, right? The D W Q, cause they were giving two million?
Well, the state's not on here because we haven't received, one, we didn't know that that was in play when the budget was adopted.
Understood.
Two, we haven't finalized it yet.
Okay.
And, and to the point about the, um, well, you, you didn't have the okay on the STAG grant money yet, but we, we felt we had a better understanding of how that process worked.
So in your, I'm gonna call it your, um, spend rate to date. Um, you take that one million out because you don't have it, and you take out that two point six nine because you don't have it, and you're no longer at a thirty percent, you're up much higher on what you burned.
It was good when you look at my app.
Yeah.
I've been looking at the same board.
I mean, that, and to my point, that was the, that's a big elephant out of that whole budget.
Exactly.
Actually, if you look at the bottom of the page here, you should track my left front. Where you see that four million dollars over one side there, that rental oven down the two third day, that's just a figure.
Yeah, I done, it wasn't here, but I did, came up with thirty-one percent expenditure year to date. But that included that extra three point six nine million dollars. That's not actually cash you have in your pocket.
So do you anticipate that you're not gonna spend any of that million dollars this budget cycle?
Um, we're proceeding that under the guidance that it's the board's wish that the lift station be corrected as soon as we can get it. So it, my answer is, it depends. When we find out what the answer is on the state money.
Right.
And how, um, what the final evaluation on STAG grant plus the state money plus the reality of the big climate is, um, when those two things, three things have, are gonna have to consider what the delta on how much money the town can afford out of the water fund as regards the loan proceeds. Are we gonna have to borrow any money? I don't know right now. I am thinking that we probably will because of the going into the cash reserves. May upset some of the, um, ratios that the local government commission looks at. But we haven't gone through that extra solid shit.
I got you. So.
That answered your question. I, I don't know, we're trying to, we're trying to bring them together and regardless of how those come together, it's going to be executed next year.
Right, that was my real question.
We're not gonna be able to get it built, you know, through, drive like driving through Hardee's up there and getting a biscuit. I mean, it's just not gonna happen.
So, that was really my question is, cause we're in February, March, April, May, June, we've got four months. Odds are, so this stuff will just show up at a budget variance at the end of the year then?
Yeah.
And then next year's budget will have the...
It'll roll across.
Two million state grant, this one will come back in there again, the EPA will come back in. And whatever the bid is for the sewer station will come back in. Hopefully it's four point eight and we just wash everything through.
Don't count on it, but yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see. But that, that's our understanding of how to play out, y'all. And what we believe is our guidance on achieving that upfit on the lift station.
But you have a million dollars in there. I mean, that would be a loan payment.
Well, that was how much, that was revenue that they were gonna borrow. They were gonna take a million dollar loan. So the, the proceeds would show up as revenue.
Got it.
But you have, you, you're not gonna, even apply for the loan now, right?
We, we gotta, I don't know how much.
We don't know, we need, right, 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 okay.
But I, I, I will tell you that we've had this same conversation with bond counsel and financial consultants because those would be the people that would, when, when we get to that point, um, would help us get through the process of banks and local government commission.
And the, and the fundamental problem is we're drawing down our fund balances because we're paying for these sewer station upgrades. I think last year there was like a million dollars of fund balance that, or, or, um, I'm trying to think what they called it on the audit, but it was, it was basically, um, cash went down, I believe. That was for, that wouldn't have been for two, that would have been for station three. I, I'm just trying to figure out the ratio, the, the concern about the ratio for the local government commission is because we funded all these, um, upgrades. Is that what has put our ratio?
No, it has, it's all our debt, not just this. It has to do with the pier and the block queue, and it's all our debt and the sewer stations that we're upgrading.
The, the performance indicator, I think that's what you're talking about. That was, it's more so a, the way our sewer system's set up because we've got special legislation to...
Oh, it was just that fund?
Do the capital charge.
I see.
Yep.
With, when you take into account the capital charge, our ratios are okay, but they don't, they don't do that on their end. And, um, in our letter responding to them, we told them that and they said everything was good, so.
Okay, but there was also a, a seed in the auditor's, I think it was, current assets went down by a million dollars. And that, that was kind of, I mean, it showed up in the audit, it wasn't, and that was cash, right? Okay. Okay, so I mean, that, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, you know, where we are, how we got here. And it's because of these major capital programs we've had. We've got, you know, one more for station two, but then hopefully they're over at that point.
Yeah.
I know I kind of jumped in and skipped over a lot there, but, uh, sewer capacity charges, it's a very few, well, that's actually thirty-two thousand, six hundred. A hundred two lines on that right there, just water capacity charts there.
And, and what is, what is water capacity on this base out of this?
That's basically if you're doing a new construction, what they're having is based on bedrooms, I think it is. Based on bedrooms, it's got an end price available, available capacity, which all, which is related, all of it is related to new construction.
Okay, so that's the fee we charge for the capital investment we made and all that kind of stuff? Yeah, okay.
That's a direct result of the system development fee, legislation that happened several years ago.
Okay.
So why, why would you anticipate that one up from fifty-six thousand yes, last year to that you were expecting a hundred and thirty thousand this year? Go ahead.
Because we changed the fee. We actually didn't have a fee, we were giving them full credit without charging them. So what happened was that, well, we changed the fees for the system development fee and include the all aspects of it.
So it wasn't, we were expecting a lot more homes being built, it was, we're charging more per home being built?
It was, uh, we had, it would have to be a determination, hey, between the, the assessment fee that they paid originally, when it was done, and if they paid compared to what the value was compared to new homes and everything.
But it, but it really looks like it was, it's closer to the fifty-six full year. Cause you only got thirty-three thousand this year. You know what, you're like a hundred thousand off, so.
Well, and, and that may, that may be true, but we've only been collecting these fees for like three years. It's a new, it's a new thing, but regardless of what the amount is that's collected, it goes into a separate capital reserve fund and it's spent.
Okay.
Unless it would be a capacity expansion issue. This isn't, this, this money that goes into this sewer capital, this, these two accounts.
Mm-hmm.
This is not to pay for the upfit of the lift station. This is a capacity.
So this is the cost of operating the system?
No, no.
It's a charge for new homes though, that he's saying.
Yeah.
But it's still way off on the estimate.
For operations or upfits.
It's kind of...
It is an expansion whenever you would extend new sewer lines to an area. That's the type of expense it would be used.
I think it would be related to, you know, I know we've got Leo Green working on that where asset management plan. And he's doing hydraulic modeling, but since we needed a second water tower, I would find a second water tower would be a capacity issue. I know something like that.
Got you.
The other thing of it is, the logical thing is, is revenue that we didn't, that we didn't get until we got this in place and, and it's every little bit else.
Okay, so help me understand this better. So it, it comes in, but we can only use it for upgrade, we can only use it for capital?
It's just what it says, capacity. If you need to increase capacity, anything that's related to capacity, you free to spend. If I needed to extend a water line down the street, now it's being laid out, it can pay for that line. Anything that gives you the ability to do, provide more water for more customers.
Okay, so that, that is a counter, this is, I mean, I'm looking at this like it's a water sewer fund. So this is what we're using to operate. Is this money restricted then?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and we transfer to that restricted account or how do we make sure we're using it the way we're supposed to be using it?
Well, one, we haven't used any of it since it's in section. That's your first question is, is if you look at the, uh, expense line.
Yep.
You have to flip over to the expense budget because you receive it on the revenue side.
You transfer it out.
And the expense line is the corresponding expense line in thirty, and it transfers the money over to twenty and forty.
Waters.
And sewer capital reserve account.
Got it.
So they wash.
Okay, with those accounts, just can't, okay, you gotta flush it through this to get it over there?
You can't, you can't put money directly into a cap, a capital reserve account directly, and you can't spend it directly from a capital.
From another fund.
You gotta take it from the capital account, inject it into operations and then spend it. Unless it is a capital project, it's different than a capital reserve, which these are.
So my point was just that you overestimated the revenue by a hundred thousand is what I'm seeing. And then the next one, I don't know what the next one is, sales tax refund water?
Well, I wanna, I wanna, uh, address your comment about overestimating it. And, and my point to, we try to get those particular drilled down, but in essence, it doesn't matter what the estimates are because all of that money goes over into the capital reserve accounts. It doesn't, it doesn't get spent, it would have to be a special appropriation by the board. So whatever we're taking in, we're squirreling it in the capital reserve accounts, water and sewer.
It goes into savings, not into checking?
Yes, sir.
Basically.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We deposit in checking and the right to check the savings is in the savings.
Right.
But I mean, it, it makes it harder to, yeah.
It's not, it's not user friendly one bit.
Well, that's, you know, sort of watching the water dues, you know? Trying to figure out how much a new house will be here, anybody, rest of the world, where somebody's gonna stay three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Those people build a house there, they might not be nobody for a month, five, eight years.
And then you get thirty-five staying in it for a week.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I was, well, I've ever come up with a true reason, I had to say, I told them, water that we actually beat, divided by a number of customers, and kind of use that for average, I mean, you have to work that pretty close, but make that occur.
So the, those are water use charges, right? I guess I want to come back to that because it's, that's the bulk of this and it's forty-seven percent and we're through January, so we should be closer to fifty-eight percent?
Well, starting with, February's bill won't go out until, uh, actually, January's bill just went out, but she's reading it up.
Okay.
So we ain't even really.
So this isn't, this is, this isn't really a...
So the proof dag will close, in my opinion, while I'm seeing there.
So that's through the end of the year, that's fifty percent versus forty-seven?
So we should go home and pay our water bill, Chris? Get your number up?
But you won't get it for a day or two, because I think she just ran the numbers yesterday, she was getting reasons. It always stays a month behind, you know, you do a bill in February, January, Jesus. But already out there, when you put down numbers like that right there, about forty-seven or forty-eight percent right now, that looks good. But that kind of gets back to where I was saying a long ago. When we start getting back into, uh, March and April, the season comes back up, that number, if you go see them bill start racking, start ramping back up, there'll be some more, some more money coming in. So I'm feeling pretty good about that, but if I put my foot in my mouth, I'll have to get the feathers out my throat there when I, when I eat. It's all I can say, it's just the energy that it gives.
But, okay, that's the water we're using and billing through meters and getting the revenue in. Now, on the other end, we pay in the county for what we're taking from them and consuming.
Yeah, it's all they have to take.
Okay, so I mean, that, if we're, if just water consumption overall is down, then we would be getting less money, but we would also have to be paying for less water on the back end, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That's on the second page, the next page?
Yeah, it's on the next page.
Before we leave this, I got some simple questions.
I ain't pretty fast, go ahead.
Okay, I, I thought.
Go ahead.
All right, real quick, we have, uh, on line oh five hundred, we have a fund balance appropriated. If possible, it'd be nice to, because we've got water and sewer mixed in here. Uh, is that the same fund that we would appropriate from or they're two different ones?
Which one are you going to use?
Um, it's, the last numbers are oh five hundred, it's about three quarters the way down. Fund balance appropriated?
It's a consolidated water sewer fund.
Okay, all right. Question answered. Thank you.
Um, sewer use charges, that's basically the order goes in your house and the water bill for a month, so you're gonna have to tell them. But, uh, that one there is a forty percent. And what I'm seeing, and I don't know, and I think this might tie into that, is there's so many people putting in for irrigation meters now. Somebody puts in for irrigation meter, those things, what you reflect, you're cool, you're gonna be playing. I guess because that one is not doing, is not getting sewer being, that makes sense?
Right, yeah, it's not going in the house.
I'm thinking that's the number, might be looking at pretty close, or maybe, I mean, thinking about, I can, I can discuss the fees of a charge on irrigation meters, stuff like that. If that makes sense?
I think so, so.
I never really thought about that at all, but I'd have something, I would put in, every, every house we can do now is, they're all two meter, two meters. Everybody's got to have green grass and it makes the world go round.
Cause yeah, I would, I would assume at some point, you know, prior to the sewer system, there was just one water meter. And then the sewer charge started to get people to switch.
It's, it's still one water meter, only a few of them are, are, were probably well over half. Cause we've only got probably about maybe eight hundred irrigations now. That used to be like a three and four hundred. Every year we get four or more because people are seeing that you're saving money on not paying that sewer charge on the water, just go to the irrigation meter.
Yep.
And we do have a real cheap base charge on irrigation meter. I don't have a spreadsheet right here in front of me, but I think you need to look at that and evaluate that because...
So the base charge is what, just the charge to install the meter or is that the water rate?
The base charge is actually, you know, if you've got a meter sitting there, that's, you've got a, you've got a water bill associated with it. But like there at your house, I think the base charge is like twenty-two dollars, like that, that covers two thousand gallons of water.
Okay.
I don't, like I said, don't dig this in stone, I'd have to have the spreadsheet back out and look at it, but irrigation, I think that's all I said. I'm probably seeing a base charge on it.
For the same water?
Same order.
Same water?
Same order, just make sure you don't.
Well, because you're not paying for the sewer. That's why it's cheaper.
No, the sewer would show up here in the sewer use charge, right?
No, he's saying you don't pay for the sewer because it doesn't go through the sewer.
It doesn't come back out.
Okay.
So that's why he's getting less money on the sewer.
If I'm trying to project numbers, what's gonna be on sewer, and I get a bunch of people putting irrigation meters in and that goes down, it makes you look at these numbers like you're seeing right here, right now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're getting lower, less than you anticipated.
Yeah, because you don't know, I mean, that's something I didn't control. But I am seeing more and more, it is very seldom that we see a new house that's got one water meter. Like I said, green grass is pretty moot yet now, you know, that's people less than says, and you go by there and it's raining and they want to degrade.
Hey, Chris, just a little more of a technical question, but I think it's important for people to understand if I understood you correctly when we visited the other day. One of the big strains or capacity issues for our water system is this increased irrigation. It's not, I used to wonder if it was the number of visitors we had, twenty people in the sleeps aid house and stuff, but in, in your professional opinion, it's due to the increase in irrigation. Is that, have I got that right?
You got that right.
Okay.
Just guessing off my head, I can give you a spreadsheet and show it to you, but let's just say this time here we use four million gallons a whole month. Well, around July, we'll be up around twenty-five million gallons of water. And you look over at fourteen million, if that, well, fourteen... And we look over at fourteen million, if that, well, fourteen million of irrigation, I mean, I'm gonna tell you something right there.
Yeah.
You know, I say irrigation, eat grass, wind, and boom, everything in.
So if you're seeing that trend go down on the sewer charge, why would you increase the outlook for the next year's budget by two hundred thousand from eight hundred to one point one? You know what I'm saying? It seems like, you know, next year, you should anticipate it's gonna be less than the eight hundred that you...
That's this year.
Yeah, no, it was eight hundred, and now it's, now they estimated it a million. You would, if you see that trend, you should be estimating you're gonna get less.
Well, that's where I'm at right now, I didn't see that.
You didn't realize it?
I didn't realize.
All right, so next year, it's gonna be lower than this.
I started placing, I said, well, why, why do you see?
Yeah, okay, I see. Good, so we'll see that difference next year.
I'm trying to...
In your new budget.
...spend that.
Well, I just, I just caution, caution the board, uh, and, and I've been trying to figure out what the relationship between water and sewer is beyond the obvious for many years now, and I just caution the board not to get hung up on, you think this is coming down, when every indicator has, it's a growth environment. Yeah, it may be that the, the delta is attributed to irrigation, and, and that's fine if it is, but it's been my experience that inevitably, we collect more charges than we budgeted for, which means we use more water as a whole, and, and, and actually do hit those targets that we, we've achieved there. And, and to the point, there's a, a seven percent delta between the, the water consumption and the sewer consumption. Anytime that we're within fifteen percent on water consumption, it is probably good.
Okay, sure.
Well, I'm not questioning the water. The water went up, and that makes sense, because the more people are here, you're gonna use more water. But if he's saying he's seen a trend in the sewer going down, then I would anticipate that next year he would.
But I, I'm just registering that, that the connection that you're making, it may be true and logical, but that's not been my experience.
And it may not be, it's just like most of many people I love.
Yep.
Okay.
I've known things like that, just make in my mind, and it makes sense to me. There's one thing I do a lot there, that I've, uh, have connection things, we actually just, just those ones, and if we got more in line, we'll, we'll handle it. They were, I'll be about a year ago, a few loads that revenue we lent, a lot of difference matters, or the...
Ninety-nine percent.
Within five hundred dollars, what we, what we reject, which is saving four or five, we reject saving five, so I mean, it's that one, my big one, that's a good way to me, is to be lucky. To be lucky, I'll take it all day long.
Yeah.
What's that, second to last one, the capital charges, city sewer?
I'm pretty confident that's that one that you see on the tax bill, was, uh...
That's, uh, right under five hundred dollars.
Is that our system or the county's system?
Well, it's, it's, it's what you pay your, when the tax bill, taxes, cost of the plant for our payment, is that right, David?
The plant, because we pay for our collection system, and we also pay for the county's treatment system, I believe, I didn't know some...
Let me, let me answer the first question.
Okay.
You're, you're talking about the one point one million dollar in the twenty-four budget line, capital charges, county sewer?
Correct, just, I'm just asking for clarification of what that is.
That's, that's what we're paying for our million gallons of capacity in the Brunswick County plan.
Okay.
Okay. So sewer capacity in there, treatment plant?
Yes.
Okay. And we're ninety-five percent?
Well, we, but that, that's the, that's the, uh, the point in my point of, pointing out, that just because it says forty percent, that's where you're supposed to be, basically, what that means is that we have paid the principal, the principal on the note has come due, and we paid it, and it's that there's another one that the interest is due on.
Okay. And why, and why do we separate principal, just to keep track of capital?
Mr. Merengue, you have to add that.
Uh, because those capital charges, they can only be used for the capital debt payments.
Okay.
They can't, you can't use them for buying valid goods or operating the station, unless you finance the legislation operating, then if you go towards the debt payment, but it can go towards, you say, the operation.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'm at the bottom of the page, and it's, uh, three forty-nine is new, and once you touch that salary and stuff out there, with the, with that tax number, it looks pretty good, see, looking at it overall. As we get to the next page, that's the half side, up there, that's the things that's thrown out. So that really, we thought we had, we were Monday, it goes to this. I could down this thing and get the hot spots like I done with Doug, it's gonna be doing like I was doing.
Okay, we're on the expenditure page, is that where we're at?
Yeah, seventy-three, seven twenty, eleven hundred, first one that stopped, so salary, that's the true salary, won't be the big two.
Yep.
That's good.
Um, see, one down there, uh, seven twenty, eleven hundred, does it, uh, communications, that'd be cell phones?
What is that?
Says communications.
Yeah. What does that mean?
Well, that's what I was getting ready to tell you.
Okay.
I say cell phones, and everybody thinks, oh my God, it's gonna be paying that for funding, but it's actual cell phones and support for our meter read system, when we get these meter readers, they're always good, so...
I got you.
Didn't see it, ran the cell phone, so I figured that'd be a car stopper.
So it's a telemetry cost, is what it really is?
Yeah, we've actually, we've actually just upgraded the program, it should train it, and I'm gonna have to, send the, like, their building there and put...
So that was, I had training somewhere on this list, and I was curious what you had on the books, that's one of them at least, right?
Well, actually, I've got some more in, always, I'd love to get, send, get some certifications, but the dangerous part of my world is, most of those places, when they become, like, there's one, we can't help, right, we have to be down in the heater, so I have to bounce all around and try to figure out when I can get somebody to die, or continue to go and get their cell phone better, us too. And that's, other than, I would go, I'd say, it's, it's not easy, somebody thinks it, just send somebody else to train, and then send another crew out, and I'm standing by myself looking around.
Um, could I make a suggestion, uh, for y'all? If you would take and draw a line across the page, underneath the line titled thirty oh seven twenty fifty-three hundred dues and subscriptions?
Yep.
You'd just draw a line underneath that all the way across, that...
Yeah.
That demarks, uh, the admin section from what we call operations.
Yeah, already, I actually already saw that.
Okay.
Thanks.
So above is admin, below is operation?
Yeah, and that's, uh, water admin, water sewer admin.
Go a little further on down the line, see another, uh, salary, one in there.
Yep, right under where he told us to put the line.
Yeah. I have a question just above the line, or request, again, where you have a contracted services, when you get some room to put things out at the right, just tell us what those are.
Um, water samples, like monthly water samples, we have to do, uh, we're taking some tests, but I don't, so money deals.
Well, because, yeah, below it, it's got professional services, so there's contracted services and then professional services.
But it could be, it could be, one of the things, like, uh, what I'm talking about right, right there now, was my contracted services, that could be, if I get something out of hand that I can't handle in house, that I need funds for to do.
Chris, I, I think this year, you were thinking you were gonna have to have help with your lead and copper lines?
Which one is the one?
Contracted services.
How far down is that right there, I need to...
It's thirty oh seven twenty forty-five hundred, right above dues and subscriptions.
Now, that's not the one for that, because there's a level, there's the financial services at forty-two five?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, actually, that right there, just being, uh, on Green's contract, and what he's doing with our asset management. At one time, I was thinking I was gonna have to do something to EVA, but I've actually been able to handle that in house.
Okay.
So we still do, uh, give money on his contract, I've actually spoken with his guy earlier this morning, and I'm hoping like he can have it wrapped up in the next six weeks, but I didn't just want him to be, to be helping for us going on with the budget.
So that's the asset inventory project, right?
Yeah, exactly, it's got the water tower stuff on there, and he's pretty confident he could have it wrapped up in that period of time, but a big part of it is, is the hydraulic model, so...
Okay.
There's one right there that says contractual services, irrigation, y'all know what that is?
No speakers.
I do not.
That's, that's actually the test in the back from the house, of course, it's a building, uh, based on the test, and that we test once a year, make sure the work...
So we haven't done anything?
Huh?
There's nothing spent, right, so far?
Yeah, well, what we used to do is, I like to wait till after the spring, because the first time we really done this, I got a little phone calls, and it was nice, and I liked, because I done it for middle of winter, and I busted everybody's new lines in their house, but they had their house, went right, got Wayne for a month, so I'll wait till after Easter, come back, and I can do it.
Backflow preventer testing?
And it is contracted out, I don't actually do the testing, I'll say...
Okay.
You get this for pump station, that's a pretty big expense, and as you can see with the numbers, that's one that's just real tight.
Right.
And there ain't a whole lot left, there's not a lot of...
Yeah, even I could understand that one.
Yeah, and that could be subject to change, I mean, I might watch that one, I hope that we heat it, but I said, that's, that's one of those buttons.
So the utilities above it is different utilities than the pumping station, what's that?
Talking about the thirteen hundred, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, we got electrical service here, water tower, could be that, uh, remember we got a house, and how it's got electricity, it goes in, things like that.
Okay.
Things like that. The M and R we could take, that's, that's the leak, two bags, we got, we got a company that does all the maintenance on that, so that's expensive already. The rest of them, we don't see them, I think, that's something that seeks out, they're pretty good, so we're planning to see when, if we want that quick enough.
What's that, M and R water system? That went up quite a bit from...
That's basically like water lines, fire hydrants, water meters, anything that's related to the supply line, distribution, well, it's done.
So that's just like what you separated out in water and sewer, you've got the lines separated from the pump stations, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
No, I see, that, that has gone up dramatically, it was twenty-eight thousand last year, twenty-three, and it's a hundred and forty-seven thousand, that's?
You know why it went up?
No.
We were, uh, we were going to shoot strings, had about two, three of those, yeah, and we hit toast, and I had a building up everywhere in, but they were in, and we'd get one over here, and I made it through, and I promised myself, when we done the budget at the end, it's gonna last ten, but they were in the hill, and we had some ham, we had some fish in there, so we, we like not even, never even got through there.
But that was actually part of the reason the current assets also went down, because so much of the inventory you had got ate up, because you couldn't...
You used it, yeah. So you stocked it back up, or you're stuck?
Leave me, I'm not planning to go there just spending money, because it's in there, regardless of what's, what's in there, as you can see right now, I live just there spending, you know, feed it, but at the same time, like I said, we would, we would just feel the fight about skin, about teeth, and I'm hoping somewhere, and if, if it should give me eye up there, I can operate like this.
And the rest of it?
Get on order of ears, you got somebody ordering twenty thousand water meters, and I'm ordering forty and fifty at times.
You're at the back of the line.
Yeah, you're the back of the line, you look and get anything. We have got stocked up pretty good, and I'm hoping supply chain issues will get better, but if they don't, and we've got residual funds that we could keep building for that supply, that's what I would be in favor of. It ain't going nowhere once it's in that building, and what, what you buy this year for a hundred dollars is a hundred fifty next. I've never seen such price increases on anything that you do.
And now, what's that one, just a little further down, called contracting services, that you haven't spent any of that fifty-five thousand?
Oh, yeah, man, I was wondering.
Okay, well, I'm not quite ready to move on. So it, it says maintenance and repair, I guess that's what's kinda, because really, it's, it's, you're, you're building up your warehouse inventory, right? Because you're stocking more spares?
Yeah, that was a big part of it.
But it, it gets expensed like it's just maintenance or repair, it's, I mean, it's not like it turns into inventory assets that you've got now at your disposal that you can use going forward. Do you understand what I'm, that, I guess that's how we account for it, but in reality, I mean, if you, if you use that money to buy assets and they're sitting there, it, it, it's turned cash into spare parts, is what it's done, it's not really, it wasn't until you use them that you actually expense them.
We've got, uh, C I P plan, it shows replacement of fire hydrant, five fire hydrants a year. I don't have one in the building, a fire hydrant, because you got three grand now.
Okay.
Stuff like that, and I ain't talking about just gonna buy a bunch of stuff to be complete, and stuff is hard to get, I think we need to get, uh, food.
Right, no, I, I totally understand what you're doing, it makes sense, it's just misleading that it looks like it's repair items, because it led me to believe we had a lot of things break that needed to be fixed, but that's not the case.
That's not necessarily breaking, but also keeping in mind, you got to have funds that if they do break.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're, you're buying inventory.
And then I get back where I was talking about earlier, you know, I got one right here, and that bag for twenty dollars, now special week, two weeks, I got a disaster, I need something to deal with, and I can't do that right there, I just can't, I can't operate, that's all, being a good friend of mine.
I totally understand, I just, like I said, I interpreted that as repairs, maintenance and repairs, which seemed like things were starting to really break if we had to spend that much more, but in reality, you're buying spare parts and putting them in inventory, which is different than maintenance and repair.
That's a good comment to have off to the right, we mentioned, so...
Yeah.
When someone sees that, they can go, okay, we're, we're buying inventory.
Now, think about this, now, when I bring you the next one, I, I, I'm gonna chase the prices, and somebody thinks, well, a hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, well, I've been with each one of you in our shop, and we stood here in a pile of carts, and it was probably as big as, about a seat, big area, you know, two hundred thousand dollars in carts out there. So I mean, if somebody looks at that number, and they look at the price of what it cost, and had the parts and pieces, we got the same, that's not much money.
I, I bought a lot of equipment, I, I know exactly what you're saying.
Makes sense, I mean...
We're, we're on the same page, I just...
Yeah.
Reading it, you know, it's, it's one thing to say, I've bought spare part inventory, so I've got it when I need it, and something else to say, I spent all this money fixing broken ones and putting it in the field, I mean, those are different things.
Oh, yeah, well, I can, I've said, well, as we get to with this town right there, I'll be more specific about writing stuff down like that, you know, because in all reality, I've been here twenty-eight years, and I've been sitting at this table right here with something like this, in front of a place that's about twenty, and it's hard to sit right here and looking at the line, I mean, that's right here, what we can't take, believe it, it's not there with phones, it ain't that easy. But I'll be willing to help, if I get down a paper like that, where you can read it, it's, it's, it's easier for me to do.
Yeah, sure, we can take, uh... Yeah, sure. We can take a.
You have to do that.
But before you get up.
Yeah, you want to.
That other fifty five thousand dollars.
Yep.
Or that's gonna take green too because I feel okay and see if it's right on his contract.
Can we take a ten minute break? Resess for ten minutes? I think the plan is to finish with this public works and sanitation. Is that correct? And then jump to the other.
Parks and rec.
Parks, I'm sorry.
No, no.
No, no, we're gonna, because we're running out of time. I mean, we've got.
At four.
At four, we're gonna jump to items five, six, and seven, and then resume back if we want, or we can recess to finish with the parks and rec, so.
I don't have too much more because unless you got more corrections, I could get to go right, do it if you do, I'll answer. That'd be good.
Yep, please keep going. Thanks.
The one you see down there that says purchase for resale, Tom?
Yes.
That's on the other end of that order bill that goes to your house. That's what we pay the county for the order that we, that we sell them.
Okay. So those were the two that in theory track, right? Water in, water out, comes in from the county and gets built.
When you look at that number over to the side, it says seventy five percent.
Yep.
I don't know that it will hold water because that seems, that seems kind of iffy, but I went back and looked at the spreadsheet in twenty, twenty three. And I added the numbers up and I'm thinking if we're gonna make it, that's based off what I've seen being and look at this paper here. But that's one of them ones where I feel sort of about like David said, when you look at it, percentages don't always tell the whole story.
That, that's kind of my confusion because that's seventy five percent paid that we're buying from the county, but we're only forty percent, or sorry. Water usage charge, forty seven percent that we bill.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess that's where I'm.
Yeah, well, me too. But you got to keep in mind, we don't bill every truck we buy.
Okay, so that we pay them quicker than we collect from our customer?
Well, when I say that, that means you've got water push and it goes on where you flush out there in the streets. The water's good stack, it fire park, ten hydrants a couple times a year. And you see a service leaking somebody's house and you see a public water out there beside the road, so there is water.
It's unmetored usage, or unmetored water, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, we run the numbers on, on a whole of us a year. Most of the time it comes back, it's, it's come back pretty good, like ten to fifteen percent. Out here, that's pretty good numbers for a system this size. But we'll see. I think I pretty much.
But I'm not quite, because I mean, in, in that fundamentally, you know, we, I assume we charge more for the water than we pay the county to get it. And that's how we fund this thing, so.
Absolutely. But then that would be the same on the other page. It would be bigger, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I guess I'm, yeah, I'm still, I guess, concerned that we're seventy five percent to the county and forty seven percent to the customers, unless I'm missing something here.
I don't know. I look at the same thing you look at.
Okay.
That was my take. I don't know what to say.
But I mean.
We can monitor and see what's happening, see if we can figure it out. Like I said, that, that reading is all correlated to your water meter, your house capturing water.
Yep.
You know, water meter goes bad at somebody's house, the only way I'll know it is this time of year. And you wouldn't know it because there ain't nobody's house. What we used to do during the summer months, we'd do zero consumption for several months. And I'd get out, we'd start riding the street looking at them. People like hurt if somebody knows zero consumption. I promise you, there's something wrong.
Yeah, right.
Try to catch them as fast as you can, but it's, it's hard to, you know, it's something hard to do.
Yeah.
You could lose it that way. I ain't saying that's why, I ain't saying that's why we seeing what we seeing here. I'm just, you know, pointing out that's things that could go wrong with that one because that's always a scary one to me.
I, I, I understand. I mean, you know, these are dollars, but behind these are gallons of water at some point, right? In terms of how many gallons we're getting.
Based off, I think a hundred and sixty six or a hundred and sixty seven million gallons of water we purchase in Brussels County a year.
Okay, and how many have we billed through our meters to?
I don't have that number in my head, but I think last year, was it the one forty's plus one fifty, somewhere along in there.
So there's twenty thousand unbilled. We're buying, but we're not billing for it. Okay.
Unaccounted for.
Yeah. Which typically is, means we got a leak. Either, either we can explain it because we've had fires or something like that, or we've got a leak.
I could do it too. And I'll also say too, we, we read the meters coming on this island every day by hand. I got a spreadsheet, a report I have to send to the state every month. And it's got every day, Saturday, Sunday, even the holidays. I want to read one of them. I run the, the numbers every month. And then you can look at the county bill. It's hard to track that right there because you don't, they seem to bill for thirty five days. Whereas if you've got thirty days over here, it's hard to track, but when you look at it as a whole, and you've got twelve months.
For the year, yeah.
It should be fairly close, but that's about the good side of the line there.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you talk to the third from the bottom? What was that big piece of equipment that you purchased last year? For a hundred and, hundred and one thousand?
That's where I'm, about a hundred and seven, you see it or?
No, the third from the bottom, equipment purchase, a hundred and one thousand for last year, and now it's only seventeen thousand for this year. I'm just curious what you bought last year?
I'd have to look back on that right there. Oh, I know what that is. I, I know exactly what that is. And that makes Leo Green look very good. That was seven, five, that I set aside to try to buy the G I S equipment to do the location, the water lines and stuff. And Green Engineering's contract had that in there, so actually we paid his contract. I didn't have to buy a piece of equipment. So that right there, as far as I know, would be expensive.
Actually, I was looking at last year, when you spent the hundred and one, was that the dump truck or the?
Hundred one, five, sixty two, the twenty three actual.
I do not know. I do, if that's, I'd have to look back and see. I don't really get it from my heater.
And then the next one, capital outlay valve pits. You have sixty five, but you haven't spent that? Are you gonna spend that?
I haven't spent it yet, but I, I'd have to play close to the end of the year because that's actually valve pits that have on malfunction. And it also covers a new destruction that somebody who built on a house that don't have a valve pit at. And we ordered a, we kind of got stocked up pretty good when we finally did get the shipment of those. And that's pretty much gonna play out for what I got left when we get closer to the end of budget time. Because it works out that if, I think we've been getting like ten and fifteen at the time, I would say like thirty eight hundred, four thousand dollars a piece. And there's a magic number there where you can get, I don't remember if it's ten or twelve, the way the shipping charges are, but.
Okay.
But those are the pits that go in the yard?
Yeah.
Okay.
I see.
So at some point, we'll have them all out there and we'll just be buying replacements? Or are we still putting new ones out for new houses?
Well, eventually, eventually when you get valve pit filled out, you won't have to have any more. I mean, it's something that keeps them last river. I mean, the ones we're putting in there, probably will last river. Because they're not like rubber like trash cans, but those first ones are fiberglass, two piece bits. They don't rust. I mean, I'd say that. So they don't get rusted and you don't get a leak, you know, it lasts a while. But if you got where the leak is bad, you can get them for the correction. We couldn't afford to pay the super bill of the county that has changed it.
Okay.
Let's hope all of them don't happen one time. Um, the other big ticket items, I've, I've still got things that I need to do. I've, I've got a generator, we've got a purchase for pump station two.
Is that on here?
Sixty four five has been ordered for a year and my last word is that it'll be here in March, uh, six, I believe, was the date on that. Leo Green stuff, uh, trying to pick each up the asset inventory.
Is that, where is that? Is this the service, professional services then, or where, where is that that's on here?
Where's which one, Tom?
Um, Leo Green's.
Well, before we went out to the room, I'm glad you saw the other line. It said contracted services. It said sixty five. I said part of that's gonna be Leo Green. I owe him sixty five thousand.
Okay.
I've already paid him, he owes the forty two five, if you see over at the top, but it's another line. Remember seeing that?
Contracted services or the professional service? Forty two five is professional services.
Yeah, professional services. Those two lines right there are gonna be going green, sixty five thousand dollars. Whatever's left should be your provision.
And what's that last line on that? The capital outlay.
It's the lift station up there.
Yeah, okay. Station two. That will most likely just be next year. That's just. Is that correct? We're not gonna get it done this fiscal year?
I see no way that it will be accomplished this year. Well, first thing is.
So should we move that money back in?
Do I have a quit that day? That's gonna have to start in the autumn season there, but I hope you can get done before we bring.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I think we already talked about, but you know, that line and the million dollar loan and the D P A, they're all just rolling over? Or do we actually, if we know they're not gonna happen, do we take them out of here, or do we just?
I, I would because it's gonna be easier to remember that you're rolling the boat.
Okay. Explains the budget variance though.
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a detail that doesn't matter when you understand the right reason for the very, in my opinion. That's all I got. Got one break, so I'll be waiting for the next one to come back. If I, if I can write something up, I'll try to see if I can have something up to run down where you can see beforehand and maybe be always.
You and I talked about proceeding ahead with getting a vacuum skid pump controller built. Do you have money in here to move forward with that this year?
I don't think there'll be that much left there, but I could be completely wrong, Rick. Because I don't think I'm speeding that out. I put the top of the air pack and tell them what I've got, so I'm kind of under the line. I'm kind of under the pressure there. I can't, a lot of things we took out of the stations.
Right.
Bring that coast out a lot. I'll shoot him, I'll shoot his word, see if he can give you some kind of spitball west. And okay, I need to get one big thing.
I got, sort of say, but the budget officer's gonna tell you that there has been no formal appropriation.
Okay.
To cobble something together.
Yeah, it would be, it would be just, I'm just jumping for a spin, but I can give you what I had.
Well, that's something we should put together for this coming budget. I'm interested in that. That thing can be, you know, as we discussed, it's kind of like life insurance. You need to have it, but you hope you never have to use it, so.
But I think I've got a couple of big, sort of, right here that I'm saying. I've actually got a set of candles rolling from the air conditioner. And I, we need to do something for air conditioning in the pump station four, whether we can do, I, I wish I had money this year to take care of it. But I don't know if I will. Maybe something I have to budget next year because the air conditioner's not adequate. Needs to sit and just lock and put through.
Right.
I, I'm actually gonna drop the jolos off soon. I get them in, maybe speak for my surprises, just to see what's coming. I'd also love to take care of the loopers on the bottom where I got the water issues for the rain.
Right.
And that would directly help that station because if, so there, I've learned the building around those labels, the access stuff, got been in. It definitely needs to be taken care of and I do want to just bring that to light. If it falls up, does something very major, two or three percent, maybe they'll be able to tie it, whatever we have to do next year.
Right. At some point, that's a capital item. Is that right, David, or versus, I mean, where do you draw the line between, uh, expense, replace AC unit versus upgrade?
In my work, I don't know if I'm wrong, maybe somebody said it correctly, because I had three hundred thousand dollars sitting there and it was M and R vacuum station. If it's something in the way to that station, I'm not gonna get underpaid by that, but I'm definitely gonna pay you what you're owing. And that's where I see funding coming from. I'm a, if there's gonna be something gonna shut up station, then I don't do it any kind of way.
Okay, are we on the last page?
I think so.
So I have a question on the last page about your vehicles. Can you, so you spent a hundred and, you had a hundred and ten and you spent a hundred and five. Can you tell us what you bought so far this year?
The top of the last page.
It's only a little page.
Page fifty three at the top.
Oh, yeah, fifty three.
Well, that one right there.
It's, looks like two trucks to me.
Hundred and ten, eight fifty five, well, no, one oh five, one twenty five.
Yeah.
I know it's a vehicle, but I look a little bit of trace in fact that I know it exists, just the years. I think six, if I'm not mistaken, I think sixty four thousand of that is the lease payment on the vacuum. That's exactly what it is. Vacuum truck, lease payment, sixty four thousand dollars, so it's probably sixty four thousand, that pickup truck.
So, so.
Make sure that we give you something right.
So that's the big vacuum truck you got sitting there. And we, we're leasing it? We didn't buy it, or what's the?
We'll own it at the end of it.
Lease to purchase?
It's lease purchase, five year, pay the season, four thousand something a year.
Okay.
And then you bought one new truck for sixty four, you think, or something like that?
I believe it's forty thousand, roughly.
So do you lease the trucks too, the town trucks?
No, we buy those, break that.
How many do we have?
I think I've got seven of them up there. And I got a couple spares there just being with them, believing in the building there just in case I get a snag of it one time. And the only reason I've got two of those is I don't go back to COVID again. One time we couldn't even get them. We just, that's the thing, I'd have to leave one spare to get them. It's a breakdown of somebody can have some. And we do got two on the auction block down.
So you got seven trucks now, two Oxon or two, what? I'm just trying to figure out how many trucks we got.
I'll get you a can. I think we've got seven or eight, um, of our campus beer. We do got the dump truck too, and actually I've got two just for sale now. One of them's flooded truck that I've been lost here in the norm. And the other one's a, a rust away there that we, we drove to, so we can get one of those, leave it or not. You know, we're getting those vehicles through, uh, through the state or through that government contract price, which is cheaper than the price that you can get in the lot. When COVID come around, they give you a price. They didn't care about whether they filled your order or not, because they, uh, they could fill the order for Jones Ward because they made more money on it.
Now, do those trucks stay at the E O C or do people take them home? Every, all seven of them, people use for?
I got seven in four weeks. They're all set for me to take them.
And what's a policy, how many mile, how long do we run them, how many miles, when do we trade them in, or?
Seven years, seven thousand miles is what it costs.
Seven years, seven, seventy thousand?
Works out real good because it works out for you about one truck a year in my department, you know, coming here and selling these pretty vehicles at one time.
So is that, is that a cap, that'd be a capital item, right? A capital plan that kind of plays them out?
Yes.
Yeah. And at one point, you took a police truck, is that right?
That's the one that's flooded, he's talking about.
They were gonna sell and actually, when I say I took it, it also works out for a good mosquito truck. I put a mosquito sprayer back up and just leave it, leave it loaded up in the building and we don't have to unload it quick. They weren't good drills. But everything that we sell actually goes back, if it rolls back and it goes through in our budget, it goes back in the general fund, I think. We've had it, we've had some good.
Why, why would it go, why wouldn't it go back in your budget?
Well, what's, what's in the water fund goes to the water fund. What's in the general fund goes to the general fund. It's a conversation I have with the police chief every year is that just because it was a police vehicle does not mean that the, that the proceeds from the auction of it go to the police department, it goes to the general fund. So, and, and those seven vehicles, just like their positions apportioned to the different funds, those seven vehicles are not all water fund vehicles that Chris, Chris is talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking about all departments. I ain't come by just moving.
Chris talking about the public works department, which has got general fund and water fund assets in it.
Well, I assume, so I guess I'm thinking you trade it in, you get a new car, there's a net cost to buy the new one.
Probably because they had only forty thousand in for the new one, so they probably traded something in for fifteen or something.
The auction.
Get that bit of prize on.
Yeah. We, okay, okay, y'all, y'all put your car dealer's hats off. Take your car dealer's hats off, okay? We, we, we're not making a deal on the car lot. We take the old cars that are out of service and we auction them. And those funds go to the general fund or the water fund or whichever fund, to the fund on the revenue side. It's a contribution there. Whenever an appropriation is made to buy, it's bought outright. You buy it all, you buy it. So we don't, we don't try to work a deal between the departments on the resources.
I got you.
It goes back, it goes back to daddy. Daddy hands it out. Daddy beams up funds, which are ultimately the board.
So can someone explain these transfers to capital reserve water and sewer? That doesn't look like it was spent.
Yeah, and that's, that's the sewer capacity fees that I was talking about a while ago.
So they just have to transfer the other?
The, the monies that have been collected on the revenue side have not been transferred to the reserve accounts yet. And those are usually end of year entries.
Do you have any transfers of full amount at the end of the year?
Okay. The actual full amount.
And the E O C debt service? What's that?
That's the note that's due on the emergency operations center.
So how come that was only fourteen hundred last year?
Dan, you want, you want to address that?
That's because the actual includes the end of year entry to, if the balance sheet entries that are due to, that's not. That's, that's a little misleading.
Um, I can't.
That, that expense is, is billed to the water fund, so it won't be showing up on anybody else's.
I can't think of anywhere else that I can, I can give that number.
Just curious, yeah.
Okay, well, let me, let me point something out about the eighty-eight nine seventy-six.
Mm-hmm.
That's just the principal amount. It doesn't include the debt interest on that. And your, your debt interest, I'll go ahead and jump in on that, the debt interest line?
Yeah.
That's the debt elements of all of, that, that go along with the corresponding principal amounts that are in the, the other expenses.
So that's all debt?
That's all.
Anything that we saw?
In water.
In water.
Water and sewer.
Which is?
And Daniel actually has the.
I don't remember any big debt.
Well, there's, there must have been station three then, right? Is that the bottom line?
The last one is.
Same thing, was five thousand dollars, and this year's a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Yeah, what's the last item? Is that, I assume that's the principal for something?
I'm not following your questions, you're rapid-fireing on us there.
Well, it's the same question, I mean, the, the EOC debt service was an auditor correcting entry or something like that, that, that made it go down.
The eighty-eight grand is the principal portion of the payment that's due on the emergency center.
Right, so then the debt service sewer?
The last item.
A principal due on the?
That's a combination of the two thousand four, two thousand five, and twenty nineteen, the, um, service payment for the county.
No, no, that's not, that's not correct. The debt service on the sewer, that, that county debt is up in that other line, Daniel.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the debt service on the sewer is the existing lift station debt that we have.
And that was mostly station three, or did we borrow for four?
We didn't borrow for four, we paid for four cash.
Okay, and borrowed for three?
Yeah.
And that is how many, well, we'll, we'll get into that more, but, okay, so that's, that's the principal payment for station three, and then in the one sixty-one, that has the interest for station three, plus the EOC, plus whatever other debt service may have been somewhere else that we didn't talk about?
It's the interest on the Wagner truck, and then there's a couple of other things too.
But it's also on the EOC and the station three?
And the vacuum truck, those are the three?
Okay, let me, let me try, let me try to say this again. The, the debt service, the debt interest is four or five components.
Yeah, can you say what they are?
Of interest only.
Yeah, I mean, what, we borrowed for the?
The Wagner truck.
Yep.
It's the lift station.
Yep.
Yep. Capital, the county.
The EOC.
The county.
No, it's not the county.
It's not the county?
It's not the county, I, I don't think it's the county. We've gone through this detail, and it's in that spreadsheet, I just don't have it in front of me now. But, but suffice it to say, in general, it's, we've separated the principal payments from the interest payments, and the principal pay, in, in all the funds, and the principal payments are listed by line item. The debt interest is a collective entry there.
Well, the problem with that is you don't really know how much each of these things cost, if you're separating out the interest, you throw it into a big bucket.
We, we, we had, in prior years, we actually had the budget and the, we just budgeted by line for the, say, the emergency center, it was ninety-five thousand dollars, or whatever, you know, the interest was on that.
Right.
The.
Auditor, that doesn't have to separate, um, the principal first interest.
Well, I'm okay with that, but I'd like to know what the interest is for each one of those things, so I, then I know how much does the EOC cost.
We, we have that, we just don't have it off top.
And it's the same when we get into any of the other things?
We have that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we actually made, for the last year, we made a separate spreadsheet, and we get out.
Okay, just going forward, you know, none of this needs to be changed or anything, I'm just saying, going forward, so for clarity.
But it may be, it, it may be helpful, because I know in the budget last year that we did a, a debt service spreadsheet, but Daniel's got debt books there, we can just print the whole thing out, now it's going to be a compilation of everything, but still, it'll give you the detail that you're thinking about, public.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's thinking about it by project, so let's just say lift station two, if we're going to borrow money, how much have we put in, how much are we, how much does it cost us to do lift station two?
Right.
Principal and pr, everything.
Okay, but that won't be in this, that, that won't be in this budget for this exercise until later.
I, I mean, I don't need it right this, I don't want it now, I'm just saying, when we start talking about next year's budget, I'd like to see what do you want for EOC debt and EOC interest, another line item that breaks that out, so I see what the EOC is, instead of a big bucket.
We'll, we'll handle that in the notes, we, we, we'll explain that in the notes, and give you the spreadsheet. That, that's what's not showing here, the notes.
Okay. That's it.
To, to, I, I will parrot off of what you said about asking for the debt service, we don't have any choice in the debt service, it's the first thing you've got to do, you've got to pay your bills.
Absolutely, yep.
Yep.
But you cannot get in more debt.
It's the board's decision.
They're saying.
Okay, um, so, four o'clock, we, we were going to jump to?
Yep, I think, uh.
Can I say something really quick before you guys show?
Sure.
I just want to take the blame to the public, the reason that there's extra items on this agenda was me, they wanted to call another meeting at four o'clock, but I suggested combining them so we could go back to the budget if we had time after, so, I know there was some upset, I just want to take the blame for that, that's it.
Thank you, Heather. We truly do appreciate that.
Yes, I do.
It sounds so much better coming from you than it would be received from us.
I thought I saw Sydney.
I thought so.
I thought I saw her coming, maybe she's.
Okay.
She might have turned around and gone out.
Yeah, maybe.
I'll step up.
Okay.
She might be in the bathroom.
So, yeah, this was going to be our four o'clock meeting, and it's really to deal with the, um, the, the items five, six, and seven on the agenda, which is related to the attorney situation. So, we will move then to item five, discussion possible approval of resolution twenty-four oh-two, resolution confirming support of the ADA, of the Key, Key Bridge Foundation ADA mediation agreement, so, Tracy.
Yeah, so I'm just going to read the background, so that everyone's clear on why we're doing this, that, in light of Mr. Green's letter stating that, quote, "Some of the newly elected board members appear to be intent on ignoring the binding ADA mediation agreement," unquote, and Mayor Holden's comments to the Brunswick Beacon that Myers, Parfus, and Thomas have voted to shut down some of those ADA agreement ongoing projects. The town of Holden Beach should release a statement that the town remains fully committed to fulfilling the obligation of the Key Bridge Foundation ADA mediation agreement. So, that's why we're doing this, and we didn't feel like we could wait until the next meeting, we needed to do it sooner rather than later, this was the next meeting that we had after all that came out, that we were going to, we thought more people, all the commissioners would be here, we didn't know, because it was a planned meeting previously, we thought if we added it on to that, then that they would be able to be here, and that didn't happen, but that was the rationale behind it. So, given that, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the mediation resolution twenty-four oh-two as is.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, do you have more to say, Tracy, or?
Yes, I've got some discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Number one, number one, evidently, y'all just don't follow your own rules. And again, using the word we, 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 in the, in the last two minutes, in other words, the what I feel in this commission is could be there, and I really apologize to the, the people that voted for me to put me in office, that I couldn't be there. But again, we were called, we, and then the whole board was called by y'all individually, that these meetings were not going to last for two hours, well, you blowed that today, you said you weren't going to vote on any issues, you did that today, so, I mean, you know, you, you're, you're making motions and second them, and just make a vote, and it, it's really, I, I think, I, I think you're, you're, you're moving too fast on this, again. In transparency, how many people are in the audience? Can I ask that question?
Eight.
What's, how's that?
That's really, that's really a good representation of Holden Beach. Again, you're transparent, and you're, you're calling meetings, and everybody can attend and be part of it.
Topic, if you got a topic?
And listening to it, as I have for the past two hours and thirteen minutes.
Um, correctly off-topic, you can talk about the resolution that's on the table, and then?
Y'all go ahead, you're going to do.
Rick, you're out of order, I'm sorry, but we're discussing comments on the resolution that's been moved and seconded, so please keep your comments.
That's fine. You're going to do what you want to do anyway, go ahead.
Okay. Rick Parfus, did you want to say something?
Well, I think it's important that we respond to the allegations, and I think it's important, although the board is not actually last year's board and this year's board, it's a continuous board, but the comments were made concerning the new commissioners, and I think it's important that we reaffirm the commitment to the ADA agreement.
If that not be done at the next regular?
Rick, you're out of order.
I have the floor, please.
Rick Parfus has the floor.
So, at this point, and I'd like to get this thing put to bed as quickly as possible, the town, at the next regular BOC, will brief all the progress they've made on this agreement, which I think has been substantial, but I think, particularly given that my wife is disabled, it's important to me that we make this commitment to finish this agreement, and I think the town's made excellent progress on it. So, it's, it's important for this, the new commissioners, to also make that commitment, because it's been questioned.
Okay, I too think it's very unfortunate that we have to do this, but we have to, because there were serious allegations that were made by the town attorney in his resignation letter, the mayor made collaborating statements to the newspaper, we received an email from the complainant in the resolution agreement demanding that we take immediate action, and the complainant notified the mediator of the allegations, the mediator has now been questioning the town representatives about our responsiveness, so our hands kind of forced, we don't have a choice, we have to do something, we have to set the record straight. Hopefully, this resolution will do that by addressing the allegations, the unsubstantiated allegations, and also reaffirms our intent to comply with the agreement. I also think that the BOC needs to be more engaged in the execution of this agreement, given the situation, and I think we should have attendance at the quarterly meetings when they occur to make sure that we're moving forward. And personally, I think Rick Smith ought to be the one attending, because you signed the agreement, and you are in the best position to make sure they're doing what it is you put your signature to, so I'm hoping that you would be involved with that, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, I felt, I feel like Holden Beach needs to publicly state that we're still committed to the ADA mediation agreement. I wanted to do this as soon as this all happened, but this was, we chose this time because we felt like this was when the other commissioners, all the commissioners would be available, since it was a standing meeting that had been given plenty of notice for, and that's why we made a special meeting right after that, as Heather just said. The request was initially a special meeting, but it just, the agenda items got added to this meeting.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Um, second item is, uh, um, what is it, Richard Green's?
Contract.
Contract.
What happened to the two-hour time limit?
I'm sorry?
We just stated three times that this was an additional special meeting that we were going to add to, we said two hours for the budget meetings, this was an additional special meeting that we called, that we, we're going to call after the one that we were already in, so that we knew that the other commissioners would have been available because they knew the time slot.
I'm saying, make the rules up if you go out.
Okay.
Okay, item number six, discussion impossible action related to Mr. Green's contract with the town of Holden Beach.
Again, I'm just going to read the background information, that Mr. Green has not provided the commissioners of Holden Beach with the resignation letter, the letter was sent to Mayor Holden on January sixteenth, and read aloud at the January twenty-third BOC meeting, it's not a valid resignation, resignation letter, because Mr. Green does not report to Mayor Holden, Mayor Holden per statute sixteen A dash one seven three. So my motion is to terminate Mr. Green's contract with Holden Beach effective immediately.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, um, I mean, I, based on my review of the North Carolina State Bar Ethics Rules Professional Conduct, there are rules related to terminating representation, attorney can't just drop off a letter that says, "I quit." A town attorney owns an allegiance to the town and not to the particular officials of the town, mayor may withdraw from representation if they can accomplish it without material adverse effect on the client's interests.
Attorney.
The attorney may, the, yeah, attorney may withdraw from representation. Attorney should take steps to the extent reasonably practical to protect the client's interest, including allowing time for transition to other councils, surrendering papers and documents, transferring files, so, it appears that, since these rules were not followed, it's likely the resignation is not valid. However, it's also, the letter contains, I call it a poison pill, but in terms of an allegation, that I'm concerned if we accept the letter, we accept the allegation. So I too believe that the, that it's obvious he doesn't want to continue working for us, so the proper course of action is to terminate his contract.
I'm, no, I'm good.
Rick Smith, do you want to make a comment?
Guess his two hours is up.
Hearing none, we're ready to vote?
Well, I just want to say that Mr. Green made unsupported allegations against several commissioners, and that's, you know, reason enough, but he also gave no notice, as is protocol. That's all.
Okay, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, moving on to the final topic, discussion possible action on hiring an attorney for the town of Holden Beach.
Well, since we just terminated our attorney's contract, we need to have an interim and permanent attorney, so I'm making a motion to retain Sidney Moore as an interim Town of Holden Beach attorney effective immediately, and instructing the town manager to sign a letter of engagement.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Do we want to invite her to introduce yourself?
If anybody has any questions?
Yeah, she's here, Sidney, if you don't mind, just please introduce yourself, so we can.
Here, up there?
Up there would be good.
Up there, please.
All right. All right, hello, everyone, my name is Sidney Moore, um, do you want any background, or?
Sure.
All right, I've lived here since two thousand sixteen, um, I've been practicing for about eight years now, I mainly practice in electrical property, but I practice a lot of non-profit law as well, in this county and New Hanover, I sit on several boards, and my main focus in that aspect is board governance.
Um, I, I think the only question that's been raised is if we get into an area that is not your area of expertise, I think you listed some, that you do have resources available that you can call on to support you?
Yes, I have plenty of resources, I have a really great network in Wilmington especially, which I think is good to have a little bit separation between what is going on and the people, but also, I do know some attorneys locally in Brunswick County, I also, my partner's uncle was town attorney at Wrightsville, and studied for about twenty years, so I have plenty of people I can call on to their harm issues.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, I, you know, the three of us, we reached out, I reached out to attorneys who've represented Holden Beach before, and he gave me the name of a couple of attorneys, and I think we've, we've also, but we have a definite need now, and, you know, one thing that we took away from the training that we had in Wilmington is you need to have a town attorney, it's very important, and you don't want to be without one, so, I truly appreciate your stepping forward in, in offering to help us in our, in our time of need of an attorney. I was also impressed, I think your name came to us because you- And, you know, one thing that we took away from the training that we had in Wilmington is you need to have a town attorney. It's very important, and you don't wanna be without one. So I truly appreciate your stepping forward in, in offering to help us in our, in our time of need of an attorney. I was also impressed, I think your name came to us because you were in consideration. The last time we selected town attorney, we ended up going with Richard Green, but you were one of the finalists for that. And like I said, it's, it's just great to have somebody here on the island that can, can help us out. So our understanding is it's interim, which is up to four months.
I think, I mean, I think four months is kind of what my idea was with how long the search will take realistically. I don't know. That might be more of a question for Mr. Hewitt or Christie to say how long that will take. But I'm happy to put a proposal in in case everything goes well, and we do all together make a good team with the other commissioners and Mr. Holden as well. But again, if you find someone better than me, welcome to hire them. I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean...
David, did you have anything? Did you wanna say something?
I was just gonna say that, and it's for the, the folks in the audience, that the, the attorney works for the board, and my, my role in this is to make sure that we advertise to fill the job.
Right. I just knew that you had, you had kind of placed a job description.
And I went, I went, I actually segwayed when we were talking about, you know, how long is the interim or temporary arrangement. I went, I segwayed to what Mr. Evans always says about construction. And I know that construction and attorneys, is nothing so permanent as a temporary arrangement. So we just have to see how that plays out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, it's very important, like I said, we, we're told in training to have an attorney. I do think we wanna follow a structured process. As we said, we've got several, several candidates that have been recommended or have come forward, and I think we wanna go through the official request for proposal of that analysis. You know, I, I just think it's gonna take several months to put the request out, get the responses, do the interviews, and make a decision for full-time. So that's kind of my thought, is we need to have somebody right away. We really appreciate your willingness to step up. Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, did you wanna make any comments?
Is he still on the phone?
He's on the phone. Okay. We ready to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Just one question. Mr. Hewitt, are you good to go with executing the engagement?
I mean, if this is the engagement letter that the board wants to go with, I mean, it's what y'all wanna go with.
All right.
I think it's modeled...
Yeah, I modeled it after the other one that was already on file because the town seemed amenable to it. So I didn't really wanna stop anything.
I, I will take this opportunity, though, to, to ask the question because it gets into how money is spent, you know? And the, the approval for specialized counsel paragraph that you talk about, the attorney has got approval to bring in specialized outside counsel for matters outside of the attorney's knowledge or practice. And that's not an uncommon practice. However, it's been my experience when an attorney needs to bring in some help that the matter is brought to the board and the board okay's.
Oh, absolutely.
The, just as a matter of process, 'cause that, the way it's worded, if you went down a rabbit hole...
You're right. I should reword that. I suppose my meaning for it, yeah.
If you went down a rabbit hole, but if there was something that you came across that you needed help with, well, then it's probably important enough that the board be aware of.
Oh, absolutely.
It's my surmises on it.
My thought process was that, I'm so sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt. So I just wanted to before, my thought process was that if the board directs me to do something, it would be a, you know, a labor and employment thing or a construction thing, and it would be stated that it is a construction thing. I don't know anything about construction law. I can do real property, but I don't. So I would want to, that's the only point of it. But I can write in as initial that it would only be with board approval first or board direction.
And, and I would think that would be okay.
Okay.
Because that, that lets us know the direction that we may not actually be on the road that we're thinking, thinking of.
Completely understand. I should have worded that correctly.
Yeah, I mean, my, my assumption is if you need outside help, that those hours would have been, rather than you spending those hours, an outside attorney, it's not like we're paying double hours.
Oh, no. I mean, the thing is, like, I could really figure out just about anything, but the amount of time that you would pay me to educate myself on it, it would be much cheaper to just have someone that's specialized in it. They could probably do it in about an hour where it would take me probably four to five hours of research, which isn't fair to anybody. So that was my thought process. But I'm happy to initial and change the wording real quick before anyone finds.
You're good with it as is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Welcome. Thank you.
I had actually one motion related to this, and I don't know if it's a motion or after you just went through that explanation, David, maybe it's just an instruction. I was gonna make a motion to instruct Ms. Moore to meet with Mr. Green to arrange transfer of files to the town of Holden Beach and provide copies to the permissioners.
Well, I don't think that the attorney needs to be directed to do that. I think it's a matter of practice that's uncommon, lawyer to lawyer, whenever they hand off clients to do that.
Perfect.
Okay. We just wanna make sure it's done.
Yeah, I will contact you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so...
Back to the budget?
Back to the budget, or do we wanna recess? Or what, what's the term?
I guess...
I don't think you need to take up the B part budget at four thirty in the afternoon.
I think...
Or, oh, yeah, Christie, you wanna go?
Before you move on, though, are you wanting, you talked about an RFP. Are you gonna talk about that at a regular meeting, or are you wanting...
Heather, I was gonna put that on for our next BOC, take the example you gave us. Quite honestly, I haven't read through it yet. I bet it's fine and just direct you to go ahead and advertise.
And we need to do that to you by Friday, right?
Yeah. I won't be watching anything tonight, so...
Thank you.
Okay, so in terms of then the budget workshop that we're in theory half done with?
Oh, so I would guess I would leave it up to... Do you wanna go on, or do you wanna wait?
If you want to, I'm in the burn rate. It's probably up to what needs to be done today right now. But if we could just give them a chance to come back, I think they'll always come back.
And so Heather, you would help us with that. Would we take a recess now and pick a new time and day?
Yeah, we would have to pick a date time certain.
Yeah, so, okay, perfect.
Okay, so we'll be temporary recess.
We're being told our live video is on. You guys met too long. You took our Facebook.
Oh, he's up the batteries. Gotta renew them.
So they're looking at Friday morning as it's available for recessing too. That works for everyone?
Works for me.
Well, we tried to shoot for two hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That works for me. Tomorrow works for me.
Tomorrow will be a little different, and I don't think it works for David. It doesn't work for David.
Okay.
We're just doing a brief recess, just resetting Facebook. But I, I think the agreement is we wanna, we wanna, what's the right term here?
Recession.
Recession.
Recession to start, restart the budget meeting, I think Friday morning works.
Okay, Christie didn't change y'all's mind while I was gone.
No, she didn't.
No, she said she was gonna wait for you to come back. It's up to you, Christie.
She's referring to you, yeah.
Really. But I think fresh minds might be a good idea.
I just, one of the things that jumped off the meeting list page was consider if you get the three hours on a meeting to, to recess, to reconvene.
Yes. So what time works for you guys, David and Heather and Christie? I think you said...
And Daniel, or...
And Daniel, yes.
And Daniel.
Friday, any, any time, Friday.
Let's do it in the morning. Nine, nine to eleven?
That works for everybody.
Works for me.
I'm good. So do we have to make a motion to recess or something?
Yes, it would be a motion to recess, and you need to include the date and time in the...
Okay. Motion to recess to a date and time certain Friday morning at nine o'clock on February ninth.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Rick, Smith?
Yeah, wait a minute, wait a minute. You, you asked everybody else, but you didn't ask Doc Dyer, you didn't ask me, and you didn't ask the mayor.
We just asked you.
We're, we're asking you now, sir. We asking you now. Can you make it, or is there a different time that you can make? What time works for you?
No, don't go there.
I won't be back until Saturday morning.
Okay, so we're gonna go with Friday then?
You asked the mayor or pay? Yeah, y'all like to do it as if y'all were the only ones involved. And that, I, I feel that really is like...
My understanding, and Heather, please correct me if I'm wrong, if we are going to, we either gonna continue this meeting now or we're gonna recess this meeting, and we gotta pick a date and time to recess to.
Correct. Otherwise, you'd have to re-advertise it if you're forty-eight hours.
Right, or we'd have to go through the whole process. So that's why we're doing what we're doing. We're following the rules. We're sorry if you're not happy about it.
We are following the rules.
We're following the rules.
So he made a motion, I second.
Okay.
Now we take a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.